Let's call this meeting of the Kokomo Common Council to order. Would you please all rise for invocation by Pastor William Smith?
Let us pray. Dear God, we pray that you would guide our hearts and our minds and that every person and every place and every background might focus on your great gift of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Help us that we might learn to live in unity. Grant insight, awareness, and understanding to us all. Let us seek to see the big picture in everything we do. May your special blessings be upon the members of this council in the important and sometimes difficult job that they have to do. Give them wisdom and clarity that they might work together for the common good. May this be all done for your greater glory. Amen.
Pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call roll?
Councilman Wyatt.
Here.
Councilman Cameron.
Here.
Councilwoman Young.
Here.
Councilman Hayward.
Here.
Councilman Kennedy.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Here.
Councilman Weigart.
Here.
Councilwoman Sanders.
Here.
And Councilman Mickwick.
Here.
Thank you. Normally in our normal meetings, we have what we call general communication. Now, that is communication other than what is on the agenda tonight. So I will ask, is there any general communication to come before the council? Before we start on the ordinances? We have not approached the ordinances yet.
Yes, I was actually bringing up, but...
Please go to the microphone. Give me your name, address, and your personal place of residence.
Yes, my name is Michael Phillips. My address, 623 and 1/2 Woodland Avenue. And that's O2, the subcode. What I'm actually bringing up is actually, I was forced off the council, like from the council meeting last week, and it was actually prior to the LGBT issue. I'm not bashing anybody, but I'm as a armed police discharge, U.S. Army veteran. I've got five civil rights hit, my first, fifth, seventh, ninth, and fourteenth. I'm asking you guys, if you guys are actually willing to protect the LGBT community and their civil rights, why aren't you actually protecting citizens' rights? A veteran, nobody should be having to live through what I went through. I was forced on the streets after civil rights were hit. I've got Indiana Civil Rights Commission backing me, and I've actually asked numerous council members, and the issue right now is, okay, if you can back the LGBT community, why aren't you backing us as citizens?
We back citizens, sir. First off, I did return your phone call, and you did not call me back.
I was actually forced, actually, last council meeting, Captain Summers.
May I?
Yes.
You asked, was that at the behest of the council? We didn't ask you to be removed. I don't know what happened. I've tried asking a few people.
That's why I keep on asking.
I don't know.
It's the same issue.
I don't know why you were asked to leave, but it had nothing to do with anyone up here. We didn't do that, okay? So, I don't know. I did try calling you back to talk to you, and I tried, I will admit, I only tried once, and hoping that you'd call me back, and you did not.
Yes, and what I'm just asking on behalf of...
May I ask you, what are you expecting from the council in regards to your person...
I'm actually bringing this up upon the council, what I'm asking, if you guys are actually backing LGBT community and the civil rights of theirs, why are you guys not protecting citizens' rights?
Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
This gentleman talked to me about some issues he had in an apartment he lived, right?
Yes, sir.
And I contacted the right people to come over and take care of the problem.
After my injury, it took a month and four days for the city building inspector to finally come after injuries sustained.
I'm sorry to tell you, sir, I went over there, not two days after that, and the inspector had already been there and took care of the problem.
Yes.
He took care of the problem, but you notified me, and I in turn called the inspector and got the inspector over to take care of the issue that you was happy.
Yes.
And, yes, I did.
But it's the reason I'm bringing it up now.
So we are taking care of you, okay? We're trying to take care of you.
And...
So don't stand there and say we're not taking care of you.
In tonight's ordinance, we're adding a section on veterans, okay? So if you'll let us get to the ordinances, you can find out what we're doing about it.
Yeah, I was just bringing this up, bringing it up to the council. I did make an attempt last week for the city council meeting as a citizen to come and speak and bring grievances to the council, but I can give you the, both captains, what the plainclothes and the officer...
You gave me those people's names.
I can give you those names.
I've already got them.
Yes, sir.
You left them on a message on my phone, okay?
But I was just asking, if you guys were so for the LGBT rights, we as citizens have rights too.
We'll get into the veterans and the rights of those ordinances when the ordinances are brought to the floor. This is general communication, and I think Councilman Wyatt has answered that we did try to help you, and...
Immediately.
Immediately, so...
And like I say, I went by there, what, two days after that, just to double check, and the problem was taken care of. It was something to do with the water issue, right?
With me pushed out, I was actually pushed onto the streets, and I've actually got documentation, October 29th, I was on the streets.
You're talking to the wrong body. We did not ask you to be removed. We did not push you to the street.
But right out here, I've got documentation.
Sir, I did, this council did not ask you to be removed from this building.
Then who did?
I don't know.
There was two captains asked me by name.
I don't know.
Why I did, was not being disorderly, and I was just smoking a cigarette outside the building. I was forcefully kind of intimidated to move, and while I would talk to a homeless man on the corner, they still, yet again, came up to me and tried to get me off the property. It's like, why in that, if you guys are for the LGBT civil rights, why was I silenced?
Sir, you keep bringing up the ordinance that we're going to do address, and I want to let you know that you can make your general comments about your living issues. Councilman Wyatt has responded what he did immediately to help you.
Well, thank you, sir.
That's about all we can do right now.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. Okay, would the clerk please read ordinance 6820 by title only?
Human Rights Commission, first reading.
Councilman Weigart.
Before I begin, I want to go through and talk a little bit about the changes in this ordinance, a little bit of the background on that. First off, it is important to recognize that 40% of Hoosiers are protected by similar ordinances across the state. This ordinance has been in the books since 1994, so it's not anything new. We're just adding a couple things we're going to get into here in just a minute. The proposed changes adjust the makeup of the committee, taking it from 11 members to seven, four of which are appointed by the mayor, three of which are appointed by the council. We've also updated the language to include disability and disabled persons instead of handicap. The adds to the new protected classes include age, marital status, veteran status, sexual orientation, and gender identity. Per the Supreme Court, religious institutions, private religious schools, and nonprofits that are 501(c) are exempt from subscribing to the protection based on sexual orientation and gender identity. We are one of 25 cities in Indiana who are extending civil rights to the LGBT community. Many of the same concerns and rhetoric we're going to hear today were present when Indianapolis took on this issue over 11 years ago. Once passed into law, there were no frivolous lawsuits. Instead, they ended up attracting young professionals, conventions, and amateur sports teams, just to name a few of the positive outcomes. Each of these 25 communities have been case studies for economic development, and a study done by Indiana Competes in March of 2015, 83% of new investment in the state went to cities with human rights ordinances that extended to the LGBT community. If we want to expand our tax base, we must grow our population, which means we have to appeal to all citizens. To the folks that say this is unnecessary because there are no reports of discrimination, it's important to understand that prior to this ordinance, there was no mechanism or agency to report discrimination based on sexual orientation or gender identity, so of course, no one filed a complaint. Members of this council don't want to sit and wait for bad things to happen. We would rather be proactive and try to stop them in advance. As for the use of bathrooms, this doesn't change anything about the safety of children. According to a report in June of 2015, OSHA addressed the use of bathrooms for employers that prescribed their federal standards. I quote, "The core principles that all employees, including transgender employees, should have access to restrooms that correspond to their gender identity," said Assistant Secretary of Labor for Occupational Safety and Health, Dr. David Michaels. OSHA's goal is to assure that employers provide a safe and healthful working environment for all employees. The core belief underlying these policies is that all employees should be permitted to use the facilities that correspond with their gender identity. For example, a person identifies as a man should be permitted to use men's restrooms, and a person identifies as a woman should be permitted to use women's restrooms, unquote. Finally, these proposed changes have never been about politics or religion. These proposed changes are about preventing discrimination and providing equality.
Okay, we need that in form of a motion, please. Do you move?
I move. We vote on this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All right, before I ask for comments from people on the, from the council members and people in the audience on this, I'd like to establish some ground, I would like to establish some ground rules of how we're going to conduct this meeting. Due to the large crowd and everyone wanting to get an opportunity to speak, we're going to limit speakers to two minutes. Council attorney will keep track of that, and we will let you know. I do not want any applauding or booing for or against anyone's position. We are going to be respectful of all sides tonight. If things get out of hand, I will call for question on the motion, and we will vote. We ask you to give your name and the address of your personal residence when you come forward to speak. We're looking to be inclusive of all of you and not excluding anyone. Also, keep in mind, this is the first reading. The second reading will be held next Monday, and there will be the same opportunity to address the council on that date as well. Before I take questions or comments from the audience, I'd like to allow the council members that would like to speak to this ordinance.
Mr. President, I would like to make a comment. I received in the mail today a results of a survey for House District 38, and without going into all the details, I'll just read the last two questions to this district survey, which is where you live, and then what the results were. Question number seven of this survey from the state representative in House District 38, would you support adding sexual orientation and gender identity to the list of protected classes in Indiana's civil rights statute? 11% were undecided, 23% said yes, leaving 66% to say no. The second question, or question number eight, says, would you support adding sexual orientation and gender identity to the list of protected classes in Indiana's civil rights statute if it included additional protections for religious freedoms? Again, 16% undecided, 23% said yes, and 61% said no. I believe that there are opportunities to make this a better ordinance, and that this meeting is hastily called, and that we should take it and work on the details of it. I also, Mr. President, have something else I'll read, but I think in the sake of time, I'll forego that.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we'll take questions, comments from the audience. Would you please approach the microphone and give your name and your personal address of where you reside?
Okay. My name is Rick Deo. I presently reside within the city limits, 2626 South, 200 East, Kokomo, Indiana. My comments have to regard to statistics that I have under the Freedom of Information Act. Indianapolis, a city that is 15 times larger than Kokomo, had 59 complaints in six years. 56 of these have been that there was not enough evidence for even an investigation by their commission. Of the remaining three in six years, one had evidence for any kind of action by the city. One in six years is a city of nearly 1 million people. One study by the New York City of Gay Lesbian Task Force, a national coalition against violence study, could not find a single incidence of housing discrimination in the entire state of Michigan, which has 4 million more people than does the state of Indiana. More recently, as of Saturday, bringing this home personally to my family, my wife was at the brand-new YMCA, and that's a wonderful building. She was getting ready to go swimming. In came amongst all the other women there, in came a woman, a lady, that had a 12-year-old child, and my wife said, "I'm sorry, but your child is a male. You need to go to the family dressing area or remove yourself from the dressing area because I'm getting changed." Another lady spoke up and said, "Yes, that is true. You need to move and go to the family area to get changed." This woman said, "My child is a woman." So what are we doing here to protect the privacy rights of other citizens? This is a political witch hunt to make Hoosiers look like bigots and hate mongers. It needs to stop tonight. Kokomo is a good city with good people, good business owners, so why do we divide Kokomo with an unnecessary political statement like this that singles out people for punishment based on their peaceably-held beliefs?
Mr. Deo, you have your two minutes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Eric Miller. I'm an attorney, 101 West Ohio Street in Indianapolis, Indiana. I'm also the executive director of Advanced America, statewide nonpartisan educational organization founded in 1980. For over 35 years, I've worked with Republicans and Democrats at the Indiana State House. I've helped to draft and write hundreds of different pieces of legislation, as well as numbers of amendments. I've had the opportunity to review your proposed ordinance, and I've identified a number of legal problems with the ordinance that the council is probably not aware. It's my conclusion, after reviewing the ordinance, that this ordinance is not in the best interest of the citizens of Kokomo, and should either be withdrawn, tabled, or defeated. Just one of the points, legally wrong with the ordinance. The ordinance would place every woman and girl in Kokomo at risk of being harmed. This has already been stated by the author of the ordinance tonight. The ordinance makes gender identity a protected class. This is on page five. This means that every person can choose what sex they want to be on any given day. Making gender identity a protected class enables a man, let's say on Monday, to state that he is now a woman, even though he is biologically a man. This biological man would now be able to legally go into a women's and girls' restroom and a women's and girls' locker room in Kokomo in a restaurant, a department store, or a fitness facility. Allowing men to go into a women's or a girls' restroom or a women's or girls' locker room in Kokomo not only defies common sense, but it would be wrong and would place women and girls at risk of being harmed and would invade their privacy. Issue number two, what the ordinance says is to tell a Christian business owner, a baker, a florist, or photographer, that if you refuse to participate in a homosexual wedding ceremony, a same-sex wedding ceremony, the city of Kokomo will now punish you with a fine of up to $2,000 a day, under the provisions of the ordinance. If it takes just 60 days to even have the first hearing after the complaint is filed, then it's $120,000. We'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about further legal problems with the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
I ask you not to do that. For or against anyone speaking? Please respect my request. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Ryan McCann. I'm with the Indiana Family Institute. We are located at 3600 West 96th Street in Indianapolis. We are the state affiliate of Focus on the Family, the Family Research Council, and the Alliance Defending Freedom. We come here in opposition to the ordinance. I've heard some of the speech earlier about the Indianapolis City County Council and the ordinance that they passed nearly 10 years ago. I will echo what was earlier spoken to about no examples of actual discrimination, of a fine ever being given out to a business or other organization in Indianapolis based on discrimination in the cases of sexual orientation or gender identity. However, I will give two examples of situations of business owners that were harmed by the ordinance there in Indianapolis. One would be Just Cookies. Several years ago, there was a small bakery in the Indianapolis City County Council. Indianapolis actually owns that building. Just Cookies, little tiny shop in the middle of that location, they just sell cookies. That's all they do. The Gay Straight Alliance at IUPY in Indianapolis came to them and asked them to do rainbow-colored cupcakes, and they said, "I'm sorry. Look at the title, we're Just Cookies. That's all we do. We don't do cupcakes." However, there was a claim brought to the Human Rights Commission in the city of Indianapolis against Just Cookies. Just Cookies was threatened with being tossed out of the city market because the city of Indianapolis owned it. They unfortunately got drugged through that process. They had to sign a private agreement between the city. No one exactly knows what happened in that situation, but we do know that they were threatened through that process. Another example is a bakery called 111 Cakery in Indianapolis, where they did not want to, they didn't want to discriminate against anyone. They would serve cakes to anyone that came into their bakery. However, they didn't want to participate in events that was against their strictly-held religious beliefs. Because of that, they were picketed. They had death threats. We got calls from them of they were nervous about their young teenage daughters being walked to the parking lot because of the activists on the left that attacked their business. And so you don't want those kind of examples here in Kokomo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCann.
Yes.
Can I ask if we give precedence to people, this is actually going to impact as far as people who live within the city of Kokomo instead of people who are from outside the community?
Yes, you may.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. McCann.
I do have a father-in-law and mother-in-law from Kokomo, and my wife is from here. So thank you for my wife.
Thank you. We would like to hear from the people that live in Kokomo as much as we can, for and against this, okay? All right. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to talk, and I do live in the city of Kokomo.
Your name?
My name is Nancy Gibson. I reside at 2711 White House Drive. Mr. Weigart, I have one question. You stated that in the access to the restrooms, that men would be, have access to men's and women would have access to women's. What about women who, men who identify as women? What restrooms would they use?
I'm presuming based on the ordinance on the wall, they would use the one they identify with. That's per OSHA standards.
So a man would be allowed to go into the women's locker room right here at the YMCA if they identified as a woman?
A person identifies as female, per OSHA standards, would be allowed to use the restroom that they identify with.
Okay, my second comment has to do with the council, the Human Rights Council, is that correct?
Yes.
Commission? My understanding is that with seven people, there are four people appointed by the mayor and three people appointed by the council. Does this constitute anybody having a say-so on this council? Is it not duly elected? This council is not an elected council, is that correct?
Most councils and commissions are appointed.
So if someone filed a, I guess my next question would be, could you clarify how someone would file a complaint with the council?
They would contact the Human Rights Council, and I'm not sure if it's on the website, but you could contact HR department, and they would get you scheduled at the next meeting.
My mother lives on a fixed income and has rooms that she could rent. She refuses to rent to one, a person that would be part of this LGBT community based upon her religious beliefs. Would she have, would she be in a position where she could have charges brought against her in front of this council? in front of this council? And is it outside of the civil court system?
No, the fines are levied through the Superior Court?
No, it's outside the civil court system.
Civil. Yes.
But they could have...
It's outside the civil court system.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, my name is Bruce Leclerc. I'm 532 West Walnut, Kokomo, husband of 30 years and father of six children and two grandchildren. With all due respect to the council and the administration for those people in attendance, I want to speak about the sanctity of marriage and holy matrimony. I must admit, I've got a lot of ignorance on this subject and many other subjects as well. But I believe my heart and my mind is guided by love and search for the truth. So, with that, my concern for us as a community and the world as well is the idea of teachings of...and this doesn't probably have anything to do with the ordinance, but I'm just going to speak if you don't mind. The teachings of purity and modesty and saving oneself for the sacredness of entering into holy matrimony, to be able to present yourself to your bride or your groom without sexual sin or stain, so that...and I think that that would be lost in the teachings. Also, it would be mocked and ridiculed, that whole concept of that, which it already is. I also ask all who are a part or support the LGBT community and also those who are here in opposition of them, will you still teach your children the ideas of the one-flesh union, where the two become one, and when they embrace each other for the first time, open to life, that the God of the universe, if he so desires, will bring a new life into that sacred union? I stand here as a sinner. I've broken every commandment there is. But I do believe I have no judgment for my neighbor because of that. In this time of Lent, it is my hope and my desire that all men and women and children search their hearts for the truth with love guiding them. I know there's forgiveness because God's forgiven me many times. Most times, I'm not worthy of that forgiveness. But I also know more importantly that there's forgiveness because Jesus Christ, when he was on the cross at his dying moment, taking his last breath, that he looked up to heaven to his Father and our Father, for those of you who are Christian, and he begged him to forgive us for our sins because we didn't know what we were doing. And that was not only that true then, but it's true today.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Michael Ramey, here in Kokomo, 2513 Burning Tree Lane. I've lived in Kokomo, in Howard County, my entire life. And I'd like to say thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for doing what each of you think is the right thing for the betterment of our town, our county. The question I have for you is, in light of the restroom, how does that infringe on the heterosexual, God-loving, American Kokomo citizen? I have no desire...Pardon me?
I said, please continue.
Yeah, that's what I was doing, councilman. So, I'm going to ask that you guys repeal this, do away with it. I think it would be much better served to be an issue of itself instead of having other agendas hidden in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramey. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is Charles Riley. I reside at 1191 South 1300 East in Greentown, but I pastor Abundant Life Church, which is located on 1025 East, 400 South. I currently pastor black, white, red, brown, gay, straight. I love this city and I love every person in it. But I do have some major fears about this ordinance as it stands right now, and I believe it should be taken off. And let me tell you why. Pastoring 1,100 people each and every week, I have over 250 children that I am responsible for, and I believe this puts them in grave, grave danger. And I'll tell you why. Number one, the exemption clause that you spoke of. I respectfully disagree with you, counselor, in this manner. I currently have a facility, and that exemption clause, I had the ordinance. When you compare the ordinance to the exemption, exemptions are always trumped by ordinance. So, therefore, the exemption clause can be removed at any point in time. Number two, I believe that this council at any point in time can remove the exemption within seven days, because that's what this meeting took place. It had this ordinance being put in place on our community within seven days. That means you can strip the protection of churches within seven days. That's the way I understand it. I'm sorry. Do I get more time if I'm stopped?
Go ahead.
Am I all right? Okay. I'm sorry, sir. And I also would ask that the definition of church or religious organization could be changed at any point in time by this council or a future council. The exemption process, it cannot hold water, and I will tell you why. I leased a property, and the exemption was the parking lot, but yet I was taken to court for the exemptions, and a judge and attorneys in this community said the exemptions do not hold water in comparison to the ordinance or the lease. So, I believe that this is a wrong thing and should be removed.
Thank you, pastor.
Sarah Cotner. I live at 1403 West Secamar Street here in Kokomo. I'd like to thank the councilmen for bringing forth this ordinance. I support adding rights that are equal to everyone else for how the LGBT community, the veterans, age, and marital status. For the people who keep bringing up danger in the bathrooms, I'm not aware of anything that makes LGBT people dangerous or criminals, so I don't understand why they would be dangerous using the same bathrooms. And for the people who've brought up no examples of discrimination, you have to understand that people who have been fired or kicked out of a home because they're LGBT have a fear of going forth and making it public, not only because they have no actual place to make the complaint to, but because if it becomes public, they have no protection right now. So, they have danger of not being able to be hired at another job or find another residence. So, I would like people to take this into consideration, and I urge the council to pass.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Brian Kidwell. I reside at 850 Spring Water Road in Kokomo, Indiana. I'm a letter carrier for United States Postal Service, and I also work for UAW as far as...I'm a UAW member at Chrysler Corporation. I actually started my own timer. I have a house that I have plans for, to build around $300,000 home. Currently, that would go into the Taylor Township area. I currently live in the Taylor Township area. I'm totally against this ordinance at this time because I have grandchildren, that they cannot speak for themselves today. I'm here. They actually go to Western. I've actually spoken with Ms. Janie Young last night at her home, and I thank her for letting me come into her home and speak. I respectfully thank you for allowing me to speak today. But if this ordinance passes, my family will be uprooted, and I'll build this house in another community. $300,000 home will be built in another community because I will not be told that what I can speak and not speak could be a potential lawsuit against me or a tribunal will come against me and say, "Okay, you're going to pay $2,000 until you retract," or not say that again. I actually have family members here tonight that are actually part of the LGBT community, and I love them just like I love every one of my family members. And I love every one of you guys, because that's what God's love does. And I just would respectfully ask you to dismiss this ordinance and pass it to another situation, because I don't think it's necessary in the city of Kokomo. I've lived here my entire life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please give your name and address, please.
My name is Chuck Sosby. I live at 1715 South Cortland in Kokomo, Indiana. Just a couple of observations. Councilman Mikulik, I know what survey that you spoke of. I take that survey with a grain of salt because it only depends on how many people actually responded to that survey. It's not a cross-section of this community whatsoever. It's only based upon the actual people who actually took the time to sit down and fill out the representative survey. So, there's other surveys out there that would dispute that quite readily.
Actually, there aren't. Worse.
Well, that's my opinion. That's yours. Second of all, to the people who are saying that the ladies and children are in danger in ladies' restrooms, any male that would go into a woman's restroom and attack somebody, they're called rapists and predators. We put those people in jail, and that should not be an argument in this facility. So, I will leave you with just one more thing. As a citizen of this country, this state, this community, any right that you personally believe that you have, every other citizen in this community has that same right. Thank you. Please vote yes.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Peter Heck, and I live at 2139 Emily Court in Kokomo, Indiana. And Steve, it's very good to see you again. It's been a few years. I've known Steve. He was my student teacher at Eastern several years ago, and I know him pretty well. I know some of you who have been on the council for some time, and here's what I honestly believe. I think that when you are thinking about passing this ordinance, you are wanting to protect individuals who are being thrown out of their homes, being evicted for reasons that are illegitimate, that you see as immoral and improper, and I would agree with the same. The concern is always, are there unintended consequences to what you intend to be a good act? And I guess I would ask for clarification on this ordinance. If we have Sharon Rogers, who owns a photography business, and she takes pictures of a homosexual couple, and she's more than happy to serve them, takes pictures and portraits of them, they come to her and say they want her to take their picture at their wedding ceremony, and she tearfully looks at them and says, "You know that I love you, but I also love my God. I love the Word of God, and I don't want to participate in an event that I believe dishonors the Father that I serve." Are you willing to pass an ordinance that would allow that homosexual couple to then file a complaint, and the city of Kokomo find that woman for exercising her First Amendment rights of conscience, her First Amendment rights of speech, her First Amendment rights of association because she doesn't want to participate in an event? Is there any distinction in this ordinance between failure to serve someone and failure to participate in a voluntary event? Is there any distinction in this?
Not that I could read. Please continue.
Counselman, I guess my other question would be, you make an exemption for ministers. I would ask why. Why is the minister's First Amendment right to not participate in a gay wedding any more valuable than a photographer's or a florist's? Why is their First Amendment right somehow less than a minister's First Amendment right?
Time, sir.
I would love some answers. Thank you very much for your time. Steve?
My name is Chad Damitz, 3012 Winthrop Lane. I'm a local pastor here as well. In ordinance 6820 for the Human Rights Commission, I will quote here, it says, "It shall mean an individual having or being perceived as having a gender-related self-identity that's under 33.10." While I understand that some council members want to extend compassion and inclusivism to those who define gender according to their self-perception, it's simply a scientific fact that males and females are biologically distinct, no matter what social policy might decree. People are distinguished by organs, reproductive functions, hormonal profiles, bone density, and neuropsychiatry. No amount of cross-sex hormone therapy or gender reassignment surgery can fully alter one's personhood. So, sociologically, my main consensus and my main point is that self-perception in public policy should not be able to supersede biological fact. Moreover, how would gender identity practically work? Would state driver's licenses indicate gender identity? What rules, if any, as we mentioned, would apply to those who appeal men and women's in public restroom? What about the fluidity of the gender in terms of, do we call him, her, or zur, or other kinds of pronouns and words that are used? What kinds of protections would exist for parents who oppose same-sex change procedures on maybe a child or one who identifies? And then, would the court step in in that situation? Would the parent's right be usurped or overpowered by the governing officials? In the end, I believe as a Christian, we ought to love our transgender neighbors, seek their good, welcome them into the community, and condemn acts of abuse or bullying against the transgendered community.
Time, sir.
And that's my point, so.
Thank you.
My name is Mackenzie Leach, and I live on 2700 North Washington Street in a trailer car called Riley Modern. I'm a student that goes to Kokomo High School, and my whole personal opinion about this is that I never thought...
Can I get you to speak in that mic?
I never thought...I don't know how to do that.
Bend it down.
Okay. I never thought that transgendered people were ever an issue, especially when growing up. I had been subjected to many different types of religions, many different types of sexualities and people. I never thought that someone that identified with a different gender and going into the female or the male restroom was that big of a deal until I started growing up and people were starting to get defensive about it, along with gay people. And I always thought, growing up, that people were able to love whoever they wanted to. My cousin, she is gay, and all I knew was that she liked girls. Little me thought, "Well, if that's what she wants, that's what she wants." I grew up, and here I am, and I'm gay, but never have I thought that was because of an influence that, when I grew up. I've also gone to church a lot, and I see people...I see two types of people. I see those that say, "I'm sorry that you're gay." I see people that slander gay. I also see people that politely tell me, "Well, I'll pray for you," or, you know, "Maybe that'll change," or, "Usually, I'll pray for you." And so, it just...just don't slander. Just let us be us. We're just people. We're no different than anyone else. Our rights should just be as valid. And if someone is a pastor or whatever, I understand declining because that's what they believe in. I don't feel like anyone should have to sue someone over it. I never thought that was such a big deal. I mean, if that's what you believe in, that's what you believe in. If someone's...if we all wake up and we all see Buddha, then, I mean, that's what exists. I always thought everything was just, you know, there's books. You can believe in what you want to believe in. There's over 100 religions. There's so much to this world. Why is being gay an issue?
Thank you very much. Please give your name and address.
My name is Alexander Dean. I live at 606 Elk Drive, and I am also a student at Kokomo High School. And in regards to people saying that transgendered people will be predators to CIS people, and I just want to know why you guys think we're going to be predators, assuming as how the bathroom is our worst nightmare. We go in there feeling as if we will be attacked, and we know that people don't want us there. Why do you guys want us to be hurt more? It's not right for you to be denying us. I go to sports competitions. I go and change with the guys because the girls would think that it was weird for a guy to be in there. Why would you want the girls to be freaked out by having a guy in the changing room? That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. All right. Yes, sir.
Yes. My name is Chris Duncan, and I live at 2305 West Maple Street, Kokomo, Indiana, 46901. One quick question. Do we have a list of the businesses who have left Kokomo, Indiana, or who refuse to come to Kokomo because we have not passed this ordinance?
No, sir. Please proceed.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that, you know, for me, one of the things that I would say is, I think that the first step in any situation is a relationship, and when a relationship doesn't work, that's when you begin rules. And one of the things that I appreciate is, as a person, is I appreciate those friends of mine, those who are family members of mine, who are part of the LGBT community. And one of the things that I have appreciated is the communication that I have with individuals who are part of this community. And even though I myself am not a part of this community, I have appreciated the respect that they've given to me and the respect that I've given to them. And one of the things that I enjoy about that is that we live in an incredible city where we are inclusive even now. And one of the things that I want to say in this manner is, I have someone who's very close to me, who recently was in a situation where they were discriminated against, and I personally decided that I would not frequent that business anymore. That was my own personal decision. But one of the things that I recognize is that we are in a community that I would prefer for us to begin with relationship, and as we begin with relationship, we can prove to the rest of Indiana and the rest of America that we don't need to follow the ordinances of other city councils in other places, but we can take our own leadership, and we can lead this community and the community we're a part of to be a great city that I believe Kokomo is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Laura Christiansen. I live at 1213 West Monroe Street, and I'd like to plead every council member to vote with moral courage. The majority of people here have voted, spoke out against the ordinance coming up before you, and I have to say, I want you to vote for it because the majority of citizens have fear in their hearts because we are different. But we have been in this community. We are the nurses. We are the cops. We are teachers. We're everywhere. So, we're not going anywhere. We are part of the community, and we deserve to have all the rights afforded to every other citizen in this city. And the majority of people don't always vote for the right progressive movements. So, I'm asking you to have the moral courage to do that in spite of the majority being against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Hi. Too short for this. Steve Geiselman, I think most of you know me. I live at 1216 West Boulevard. I'm also an elected official, but I'm speaking on my own behalf here on the Center Township Board. I think something we haven't really addressed in great detail is the economic impact. I think we witnessed with the incompetence of our governor and the state legislature last year how they handled that issue, and I think that the focus needs to be on preserving our good economy here in Kokomo. And I would...I'll keep it brief. I just encourage all of you to pass, to vote yes on this ordinance and move forward, and we can move on. Thanks.
Yes, please.
Hi, my name's Abby Croom. I live at 3142 South 150 East. I guess my first question to you guys is, can you guarantee me that a man not of the LGBT community will decide to dress as a man that day to walk into a locker room of women? That's my first question.
Please proceed. We're here to hear your...
Okay. My second question, or I guess my statement is, I have a little girl who is six years old, and my job as a mother is to guide her moral compass. And I feel that if you pass this, you are stripping me as a parent to guide her moral compass with fear that we will walk into a locker room and that she may see a body part that she should not see at her age, or that she feels maybe a man that is not of the LGBT community comes in dressed as a woman and looks at her in an inappropriate manner. And I feel that you would be stripping me as a parent of those rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Denzel Woodup.
You can raise that up.
Thank you. I currently reside at 1325 North J Street in Kokomo. I'm a small business owner. I'm the owner of Cypress Construction, who operates inside the city limits. I'm also a husband, a father, and a grandfather. I was recently given the gift from God of a grandson named Samuel Isaiah Bentley. He is the love of my life, and he is a true miracle. I'm here to represent his generation because that's the one that's going to be impacted by this decision. It's going to be the company or the city that he grows up in. He gets the call home, and what protections he's going to either get or lose in the decision that you make. I'm also not a real big proponent of adding a bunch of rights to a certain particular geographic or demographic part of the community that puts businesses or others at risk. This ordinance looks like it's only going to be a tool that the LGBT community can use to make us that are Christians, who are not haters or fear mongers or anything else, they'll get to use it as a tool to call us that will be called everything from gay bashers to whatever. I mean, without having a real need for this bill to be passed, I don't really see the need for it when it's putting businesses at risk that have to pay taxes to support this administration, this city council, and this government. I mean, you're really putting us at risk, and I really think you should take that into consideration.
Thank you. Yes. I will clear the room. I'm serious about it. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Angela Glosser. I live at 6008 Yale Boulevard here in Kokomo, and I'm a professor at Indiana University Kokomo, and I'm also a researcher. My area of research is social inequality and criminal justice. What we have found in our research areas are no reported cases of individuals disguising themselves as transgendered members of a community and coming in and committing a sexual assault in a bathroom. That is what we call a moral panic. The other thing that we know from our research is 90% of all discriminatory acts against LGBT community go unreported. Finally, I'd like to speak about how, if we look back at our history, 60 years ago, we were having these same discussions over water fountains, bathrooms, and restaurants. The same people who, back then, used biblical scripture to justify racial segregation. They did not want black people into their bathroom because something bad might happen. They didn't want to share dining experiences with black people because it was against their religion. If you look at some of the pictures of these young kids coming to school, first desegregated schools, you will see pictures of posters, people holding posters behind them that say, "Desegregation is a sin" with Bible verses. We do not want to repeat that kind of history. We need to make history by promoting equality. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Michael Highland. I live at 1916 South Cortland Avenue here in Kokomo. I'm a nurse practitioner by training, and I'm a family nurse... I'm a nurse practitioner by training and I'm a family nurse practitioner. I see people here locally who are shut-ins or that are too ill to actually get to their family physician. I provide primary care. I also happen to be a wedding photographer. So when we, when we talk about the small businesses and, and the fines and things that may be associated, I can tell you that a $2,000 per day fine on my company would absolutely bankrupt me personally and ruin me if I chose to decline the wedding of a gay couple. That does not mean, however, that if I declined that wedding, that it was for prejudice. I have declined weddings for heterosexual couples over the years that I've been in business. But it makes me a target. I'm sorry, this ordinance makes me a target for saying no to a gay couple and losing my, my viability and be able to raise my family. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Dan Myers. I live at 1853 East 100 North or Sycamore. I'm not sure yet. They just moved the city limits on me. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I was impressed by, actually, I'm broken heart about two things that I've heard. First of all, I've heard people of the LGBT community say that we're afraid of them going into the opposite sex bathroom. I'm afraid of sexual predators going in there because I've seen what rape and, and that can do to a person. And it's a terrible, and don't tell me the sexual predators are not drooling over this opportunity to go into the women's restroom. There's a reason they're on a list, okay? But, but we're not afraid of you guys doing that. And that's, that's not the point. The sexual predators is the point. The other point, the thing that really broke my heart, though, is that you don't know that the Church of Jesus Christ loves you. It is our duty as Christians to show the love of Christ to you. The problems that I hear about here should be addressed by the church with you LGBT people. We should work together and, because we're, we're in the wrong. Segregation and racism was wrong. Those people with the, with the wagon, the cards with the scriptures on them, they were wrong and we're wrong not to love you and show you that we care for you and we want to help you and just embrace you into this community. I don't know, I don't know what actual offenses have been committed against you, but those offenses are wrong too. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Rich Schallberger, 900 North Hillcrest Court, Kokomo, Indiana, 46901. I come against this, whatever this is, this, I'm not for what this is going down. I am a Christian. I am an apostolic. I have a three-year-old daughter and I will follow her everywhere that she goes to keep her safe because nobody's going to do anything to my daughter. I'm a Christian and I believe in every word in the Bible. I am apostolic. I'm baptized, Jesus' name. And if we, if the society was right, we wouldn't even have to have a meeting tonight because everything would be fine. For those, they need to get saved, I believe. They need to turn their lives over to Jesus. And I'm not, I'm not saying anything against them. They just need to change their lives for the better. And there are sexual predators out there that go into bathrooms and that's not going to happen to my children. And I'm just speaking my rights and they need, they need the love of God in the heart to change their life. And I came to speak my piece tonight and I love the Lord. And I got a bunch of minister friends of mine that were here. My pastor, Keith Mosier, Southside Apostolic Church, he will not marry in the church. He will probably have to close down the church because he will not take this fine or $20,000 fine or $2,000 fine. We're not going to take it. The church will not do it. Thank you.
Good evening and thank you for bringing this up. I really appreciate this because I myself have gone through a lot of this discrimination in my life here in Kokomo.
Could you please give your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Daryl Blossis, 115 North Hickory Lane, Kokomo, Indiana, 46901. I know that's right outside the city limits, but we have lived here in Kokomo our whole life. And I appreciate all the support that you guys are giving us to, to look in this issue because, like I said, we aren't asking for anything special. We are just wanting the same rights that everyone else has in this room. That's all we want. Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. All right.
My name is Allison Johnson. I live at 1212 Crestview Court. I didn't come here to talk, but I think really everyone needs to understand it's not about separating. We love everybody. We are not trying to say that, you know, that, that LB, I'm sorry, I don't have it, transgenders and stuff, we're not trying to say they're pedophiles. That's not what we're saying at all. They're very loving people. My sister is gay. I don't have anything against that. I just think everyone's looking for respect, love, and appreciation. And I think that, you know, yes, I go to church, go to the Abundant Life Christian Church. Everyone is who they are. God loves everybody. It's not up to us to do that, but I do have a fear. And I think that's why a lot of us are here. We have a fear. I have a daughter at Northwestern High School. There is a gentleman there that feels he is a girl. And that's okay, but he's not going about it right. And so it, it makes my daughter's life at school very stressful because he intimidates people and nobody says or does anything about it. The teachers don't, nobody does. And I, and I think that there needs to be a line drawn as far as that. So if you pass this, my daughter has nowhere, nowhere to go for safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Demetrius Warren, 1105 North Bell Street. I was going to sit here and I was just going to listen to what this community had to say because I think it's important sometimes to just listen. I do want to say this to the LGBT community and to this board. It is offensive when you compare your civil rights to black people's civil rights. Offensive. Until they kill you and rape you, change your name and put you in a backyard and tell you you can't leave the yard, there is no comparison. Now, with that being said, I do believe that there are some civil rights that have been violated by that community. And I don't believe anybody's civil rights should be violated. I just believe at this point in time, the ordinance that has been placed before us is not complete. And I think it needs to be completed. And I do have a concern. I have a 14-year-old daughter and if I saw a guy walk in the bathroom after my 14-year-old daughter, I promise you, somebody else is walking in there after her, after him, because he's not going in there with my 14-year-old daughter. I don't know if he truly believes he's a woman. I wouldn't know that. I have no idea. And I wouldn't know anybody else's sexual preference until you let me know what your sexual preference was. And so my job is not to decide whether you are or you're not. My job is to make sure that if I see something and you're, and you have the same body parts as me, my assumption is, is my daughter is at risk. And I would hope that before you pass this ordinance, that you at least go back and look at some of these details that need to be dealt with before you would just throw this out there for anybody to violate it. I don't think the LGBT community are rapists or pedophiles. I don't believe that. But I do believe, as we all know, there are black jerks, white jerks, and LGBT jerks that will try to push the envelope to do something that would harm, for the greater harm of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Carla Camarella. I live at...
We're going to go about, excuse me, we're going to go about 10 more minutes and then we're going to call question on the motion.
Okay. My name's Carla Camarella. I live at 747 South McCann Street. I'm an immigrant. My fa, my parents were displaced persons of war and they got visa status to come to the United States. By the time we were all approved, my, it took years. And my parents were very well established in Italy, but still, they chose to make the sacrifices to come here to the land of freedom and equality and opportunity because they wanted to make a better world for their children. Now, my parents both passed before I came out, but they would be so ashamed to know that their, they brought their daughter to a place where she is denied her rights. She doesn't have the same rights as another individual. Now, to speak to the people about, about sexual predators, okay? Let me tell you a few stories. Let me tell you about going to the movies with a friend and a dirty old man comes and sits next to me and tries to put his hands up my crotch. I've got, let me tell you about drivers standing, driving next to me and making lewd comments out the window. Let me tell you about these people. They, and they've always existed. So those people who are so upset about potential sexual predators, where were you back then? Where were your concerns back then? That's it. Please.
James Quirk, 7040 Skarhart Street, Kokomo, Indiana. First to start and say thank you for having this meeting. I've been married for 35 years to a woman. I feel like the Bible talks about a man and a woman being married. I feel like the churches, and I've seen on the computer where it talks about the hellfire, damnation churches that still preach against sin. Where is that going to keep the church at? Are we going to have to close the churches because of fines and penalties? I mean, I believe American people is tired of stuff slammed down our throats. I believe that's the reason why a Republican president right now, Donald Trump, is ahead because he speaks exactly what everybody feels. He's got the guts. America is tired of stuff being crammed down our throats. Enough is enough. I would hope and pray that you would take this ordinance off the table and forget about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Renee Dean. I live at 606 Elk Drive. I'm the proud mother of Alec Dean and I'm also a grandmother. I thank you so much for bringing this ordinance out. You know, transgender people, LGBT and, but transgender in particular, are the most targeted for violence now. Yes, they are murdered. They are attacked and we need this to stop. We need to have, let all LGBT people, BT have the same rights as everyone else. I've got a very smart son. He's not afraid to get up and speak his mind and I thank God for that every day. What could, people could say, well, I'm sorry, yeah, you're smart enough to get into this college, but you're transgender, so no, you're not going to go here. Or no, you can't live there because you're transgender. His dream is to be a gender-specific psychologist, to help people like him. What if someone tells him, no, you can't do that because you're transgender? I want my son to have the same rights that I have for freedom, for whatever he wants to do, whatever my granddaughter chooses to do, my other daughter. I want them all to have the same rights. Please vote yes on this ordinance.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Dan Seiggrave. I live at 2565 South 1150 East Greentown. What brings me to this microphone tonight is the fact that I do attend Abundant Life Church, 1025 East 400 South, which is in the city limits. Steve Whiteheart, councilman, mentioned something about, that brought my attention about fluidity, a person deciding who they are. I am also the continuing ministry coordinator for the CROs of Indiana, which is a prison ministry I serve in Miami County. A lot of the men that are in CROs, the inmates up there, the offenders as you will, are in there for sexual crime, okay? We preach the love of Jesus to these men. I have no problem with any of these folks in this room. They all have their rights. I guarantee you that. But I want to point something out to you. The way this ordinance is written, the fluidity of it, are you going to have restroom monitors to make sure that a person that's going in there, either dressed as a man or dressed as a woman, isn't going in there under poor and bad intent? I don't think you can do that. You know what I'm saying? I don't think you can until you, until you ratify something into this law that you're trying to pass, this ordinance you're trying to pass to protect from sexual predators because they will gladly use your rights to molest or worse. The criminal element is out there and if you folks don't think it isn't, you haven't been in prison and met with these guys. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Tony Stewart. I pass to the Reformation Faith Ministries Church. I just have a couple of things I want to say. Number one, I don't come to preach anything but Jesus because Jesus saves and he loves My thought for this is not that I'm against the LGBT movement because, you know, everybody needs their fair and opportunity rights. I do have a couple of concerns. Number one, I believe the rule is pushed too fast, too, too quickly. There's many questions that have been opposed out here and different individuals asked and different things and there's not been answers about those things. The other thing is I have four young daughters between the age of 12, 12, nine, six, and three. Now, I'm always going to be cautious now, not that they would do anything, but just that a man would be in there with them. So I think that we should take a step back because just remember, when you run fast, later on you go slow. But if you go slow, you can go fast later. And all I'm asking you to do is just take a step back, make sure everybody's rights are protected, make sure those who love Christ and push Christ forward, that our rights are protected too, but don't rush on it, yes? Thank you so much.
Mr. President, I'd like to, after three speakers that are here, I'd like to call the question.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Joe Wampler, 2818 Plum Court in the city of Kokomo, Indiana. I would suggest to you that as you have had this ordinance prepared as the way it stands, you're telling me that you want to protect the LGBT movement. I understand that and I can appreciate that. I've worked in factory life and I'll tell you right now, I think the vast majority of these people that are here for that, I don't think you're pedophiles. I don't think you're lawbreakers. Matter of fact, I've worked with some guys that were openly gay that were some of the best workers I've ever worked with. And for what it's worth, my hairdresser is gay, openly homosexual, and I go to him because I think he's the best one I've ever been to. That being said, I know what you're thinking, a finder's fee for the other half. That being said is this, here's where I have an issue with this, okay? If I understand this, let me present a question to this board. If I own a bakery and someone that is LGBT calls me and wants me to make a cake that says, "Congratulations, Adam and Steve, on your marriage," would I be violating this ordinance as you have it prepared right now?
We're here to hear your take...
Sir, you know that I would. Please don't dodge my question. Here's the problem, sir, that I'll address you with, okay? That if in fact that is true, if one of these people that are for these rights own a bakery and I call them and I say, "Make me a cake that says homosexuality is a sin that'll cause you to split hell wide open," do they have the right to refuse to make my cake? I would submit to you that this ordinance, as it is prepared, has more holes. Yeah, thank you. I, I would submit to you that this ordinance, as it's prepared, has more holes than a fishnet in it and you will open yourself up and I guarantee it.
Thank you.
Sergeant James Keith McBride, 4447 South 580 West Roosville, Indiana. Councilman, I would ask that you please vote...
Sergeant, could you hold one second?
Yes.
The lady in the blue shirt is the last one to speak.
I would ask that you vote no for this. I served this country. I serve it proudly. I serve it for they to have rights. I have rights as well. And I think this ordinance would violate my rights if I want to say no because I'm a Christian and my beliefs I believe in is strong. I have a right to say no just as much as they have a right to go somewhere else and find what they're looking for. Thank you.
My name is Shiana Sharp. I live at 406 Sunny Me Drive, Kokomo, Indiana, 46901. And I have one thing to say. My Lord Jesus Christ died on the cross. He bled and he died with no mercy. I think the right should be for all of us, not just the gays, but for all of us and it should be equal. If I would walk up to someone and say something that I shouldn't have said, I probably don't even know if they're a homosexual or if they're a straight person. I know it's a sin and I know one of these days and they can live their lives the way they want to, but when they die, they're going to be on the edge of hell and there will be no heaven and they will burn. So whatever they are or whatever they do, I don't think this ordinance is correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hays?
No question. Yes, sir.
This lady couldn't get up there because of her handicap. She wanted to speak. Can you listen to her one more?
In deference to you, councilman, yes, she can.
Did you want to go up and speak? She couldn't stand in line.
Could someone adjust the mic for her, please?
I know I'm short. My name is Joanne Rothlow. I live at 1109 Linda Drive, Kokomo, 46902. And I have lived in Kokomo, was born here 85 years ago. I've lived here all my life. I have never seen anyone or heard anyone mistreated. I believe that different things that were said here tonight almost brings division like we see in our nation. I feel like if this ordinance is passed, it's a violation of my First Amendment rights. I believe that everyone is entitled to the way they believe, but please don't be like the government that's gotten too big and take away my rights. I want this for my children and my grandchildren, and I thank you for this time.
Thank you. All right, a question on the motion has been made to vote on ordinance 6820, and it has been seconded. All those in favor of passage of this ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed?
No.
Would the clerk please call roll?
Councilman Wyatt.
No.
Councilman Cameron.
No.
Councilwoman Young.
Aye.
Councilman Hayworth.
Aye.
Councilman Kennedy.
Aye.
Councilman Wykert.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sanders.
No.
Councilman McLeck.
No.
Councilman Hayes.
Aye.
Five to four.
Motion passes by a vote of five to four. I want to remind you, on the 14th, there will be a second reading, and we'll go through the same procedure. You'll have an opportunity to speak, okay? We're going to take a five-minute break, and then we're going to go and act upon our very last ordinance. You're welcome to stay. Can we come to order? Can I get my officers to help me bring it to order, please?
Well, they can't go anywhere.
Give them 30 seconds. Okay, would the clerk please read ordinance 6821 by title only?
An ordinance to create the position of deputy mayor for a reading.
Councilman Wykert. Just to give a little background on this, this is a change in title only, so it actually changes the director of operations to deputy mayor. It is not a creation of a new job, it does not affect the budget or the job responsibilities or roles within the city's current structure. It also, by doing this, provides a better and clearer understanding to outside developers, businesses, and organizations of the city's internal structures, lends more credence on the individual's authority to buy in the city to commitments, demonstrates a clear commitment of who will be tasked with ensuring the city continues to operate as efficiently and effectively as possible should the mayor be unavailable for a period of time, and is a step in the right direction of modernization, and is in line with steps taken by other cities of similar size, including Fishers, Bloomington, Lawrence, Anderson, Westfield, Logan's Fort, and Noblesville.
Thank you. Motion has been made. Do I have a second? Thank you. We have a second. Is there any further discussion from anyone on the council, or anyone in the audience in regards to this ordinance?
I would like to ask our city attorney a question, if you will.
Would you please approach the mic and give your name and address, please?
Hi, Beth Garrison. Since you're asking me, my capacity as corporation counsel, I'm 100 South Union Street.
I have, would you please, for the council, repeat what you shared with me earlier about the replacement of the mayor? In the event that we don't pass this, in the event we do not pass it for some reason, what happens to the mayor's office, and how does that process work?
Okay, so as I understand your question, if the mayor becomes unavailable for some particular reason, the city controller would step in by Indiana statute and serve as the acting mayor in that capacity for 10 days. At that point, the, because the mayor is a Democrat, the Democratic Party, the chairman would caucus, and that would be, a person would be selected to serve the rest of his term.
By the party?
By that party. And that would be regardless of the administration, it's the current administration.
I understand. That's fine. Thank you.
Uh huh. Anything else while I'm here?
Okay. Thank you.
I might add, Mr. President, that state statute is the guideline that we go by if
the mayor happens to be incapacitated for a period of time and is not able to fulfill his duties. That's a state law, has nothing to do with this particular ordinance. As Councilman Wykert mentioned, it's merely a name change only, and as budget chairman, I can assure you, it is also a financial even...
Net zero.
Net zero. We are not creating a new position, we are not adding money to the budget.
In effect, if we don't pass it, though, that's why I asked the question. Well, then, let's get the vote. Right. Absolutely. All right, is there any further questions from anyone on the council, or in the audience in regards to this ordinance? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, being there's no further business to come before this council, this meeting is adjourned.[1779.14]